Hey Michael, how you doing?
Well, how are you?
Make sure I'm together.
Long time no see, Mr. Carbone.
Yeah, I know.
It was, it was. You know, it's why I have a heart.
How you doing? It's a good omen.
But I'll have to cut out.
I love those kind of programs. I have a soft spot for alternative programs. I just love it. Not every child is gonna follow the traditional route. And any district who chooses to think that they will, it's truly, you know, first of all, just living in la-la land. And second of all, doing our kids. Huge disservice. Huge disservice. I was like, no! Just hug them.
Exactly, so exciting, very, very exciting. I have faith.
We'll see.
Wake up, wake up. Yeah! Uh, no, I just, now I'm overtired.
And you, you're done with school, right?
Yeah, I finished. I signed out of my room last night.
Oh, I didn't know.
I was done with school last week. But I had some RA things, I had to go check things out.
You're at RA too, and do you have a job?
Yeah, yes. So I turned in my keys and everything.
He'll be right back.
Wow, got outside of him.
He's on the way.
All of a sudden.
Well, I mean, I'm still part-time.
That kinda stuff.
Everybody got real quiet, just waiting for you.
Have that effect on people.
Sometimes that's a good thing, sometimes it's not. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was just staring at that wall and remembering our mural with the guys drinking the beers with the pipes and all that, good stuff.
Coca-Cola.
It was Coca-Cola, okay.
Yeah, okay.
But I just looked up there and I says, oh my god, that wasn't that long ago. I don't know, but it definitely was not, it was a beautiful mural, but it was definitely not appropriate in it.
They were hobbits.
They were hobbits, yes, they were. Yeah.
Are drinking, we get Coca-Cola.
Okay. I'd like to ask that we observe a moment of silence for the following individuals. Adam Heck, a graduate of 2007 from North Syracuse Central School District. And Martin, Marty J. Campbell, a teacher in the North Syracuse Central School District.
I'd like to just add that tomorrow, the high school will be closed in order for the staff at the high school to be able to celebrate the life of Marty Campbell. I continue to hear what a great teacher he was and how the students and staff just adored him. And when you think about the kind of educators that we have in this district, he truly represents those individuals. And so, I've gotten a number of emails, possibly calls, I haven't checked all my voicemails yet. But I do want you to know that we truly wanted to honor his memory and we wanted to ensure that the staff would be able to do so by attending his service. Thank you.
Okay, good news, student recognition, are we?
The first is National History Day State Championships or Champions. The National History Day is a year-long history education program that challenges students in grades six through twelve to explore local, state, national, and world history. This year, we are honored to have two students, Anna Bergulis and Kathy Leonard, won first place in the senior grades nine to twelve group performance. And both these students will be attending the national competition in June.
Sure.
The CNS Optimist Club conducts positive service projects aimed at providing a helping hand to young people in the North Syracuse community. The Optimist Club is one of thirty-four clubs in the Atlantic Northeast District that stretches from Jamestown, New York to Portland. The CNS Optimist Club chooses their own activities, elects their own officers, and raises their own funds. And tonight, we'd like to acknowledge Daniel Harbaugh and Hannah Scullysey.
I'm just gonna present his speech.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right, she's the next one. And we can't, oh my god, how could I forget Kara? Kara Burns.
Hey, Kara is actively involved in St. Margaret's Parish. She has been a volunteer at many church functions, among them, the Parish Summer Fest, the annual Fall Craft Show, the African Mission fundraiser, Lenten fish fries, and active participation in her parish youth group. In addition to her academic excellence, Kara has been recognized for her community service in demonstrating leadership excellence, winning the St. Michael's College Book Award, as well as acceptance to the National Youth Leadership Forum in Washington DC. Great job. Ah, okay, and your mom teaches in the district also? Whereabouts? Roxboro. Well, great, congratulations and great job. Okay. Our oratorical contest finalists, last year when they presented their speeches, I was just, I think, not just I, but we were all so impressed at how young they are and how wonderful a job they did. It's a difficult thing to speak in front of a group of people. I certainly understand that. And to be able to do it so well at such a young age is just a great thing. So why don't we have them come up and... Who's up first? Okay. Okay, come on Teresa, I'm right up in shore.
Hi, I'm Teresa. As... I left the wire back there. You wrote short print it. Coming up with all the beverages for the after the ball. I left for ya. Found me, I mean, these are like the future presidents of the United States. So Hannah couldn't... He goes to his zone. I believe in one of twenty-five.
How often? Turn to one side.
Thank you, thank you. Wow, Daniel, tremendous. Great job. Great job. Maybe you could help me. That's wonderful, great job. Okay, our BPT presentations, Roxboro Middle, why don't we start there? Awesome. Yeah, you're not gonna be able to follow that one. Just try to do the best you can, that's all. Be optimistic though.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Shaw, I'm the principal at Roxboro Road Middle School. I've been on the job for officially two weeks now. And it's a pleasure to be here today to speak with you all. And I can't tell you what a wonderful, just overjoying welcome I've had to be here. Not only from you folks and the board, thank you all for meeting with me about a month ago over in the junior high school. That was a wonderful welcome. But also from our staff and students at Roxboro, it's been just, been wonderful. It's been overjoying, so I'm very excited to be a part of it, yeah. And with obviously talent like we have here, goes without saying, I'm very excited to be here and looking forward to doing some great things, so.
Excited to have you. Excited, that's a great place. Roxboro's a great place, so.
Well, we've got our work cut out for us as well, no doubt. So I don't wanna take up too much time, but we should get to it. And I also brought Mrs. Sullivan here, of course, to speak to the work that's been done this year. Because being two weeks on the job, I couldn't speak to everything that's gone on, of course. But they'd wanna start us off here tonight, so. I wanted to start with a quick discussion of where we are at right now, based on our most recent school report cards. Based on the ten-eleven school report card, I have a quick graphic for you here about students that are at or above level threes on the ELA in math for each grade level. As you can see, fifth grade, the low forty-one there, all the way up to a high of sixth grade in mathematics with a sixty-five. We'd like to see improvement across the board. We are currently Cini. We did not make AYP, our adequate yearly progress, and other group students with disability subgroup, fifteen percent, that's nineteen out of twenty-three passed in year ten-eleven. In eleven-twelve, the tests that have just completed, we need nineteen point eight four percent to make our adequate yearly progress. And eleven, we are not Cini for that, but we did have thirty percent pass in our Black African-American subgroup this last year, and we need the same number approximately, although with different numbers, four instead of fifteen out of fifty, to make our adequate yearly progress in this school year. So where are we going? Our key goals, number one, meet our AYP in all categories and subcategories. There's no substitution, as far as I'm concerned, for this goal, number one. Increase the number of students scoring level three or four on the New York State ELA by 2014. This is documentation that I have, as far as our SEP and QIP. Grade five, we're looking for a twenty-three percent increase from the ten-eleven school year by 2014. Grade six, sixty-five, that's fifteen percent increase, and grade seven, a ten percent increase. So we have an action plan to get us there. And this, you all seeing there, Mr. Carbone?
Yeah, we had a little difference of slides there.
That's a function of my two-week stint, my apologies.
We're good now from here?
You're good from now on, apologies. Our action plan is broken into several parts, and I'm gonna let Mrs. Sullivan speak to what has already been done this school year.
Hi, and thank you so much for having us here. I'm Jenny Sullivan, and I teach sixth grade at Roxboro Road Middle School, and I'm also the BPT chairman. And I just wanted to take one minute and, you know, welcome David Shaw. We're very, very excited to have him here and optimistic about the future. But I also wanted to extend and let all of you know what a rock Linda Jackson has been at our school. And even with all of the changes in administration we've had this past year, she's always been there for all of our staff, and she's kept our building going. And with all the testing and all the organization and everything, it couldn't have run smoother. And she's always there for you, if you need her to come down to your classroom, she will drop everything to come down, and we really appreciate that. So onward with our action plan. Last fall, when we had our half-day BPT day, our entire staff, a hundred percent participation of those who were able to stay in the building, some people get called out to other meetings, but the ones who were there, every single staff member joined one of these action plans, and there's seven there before you. And they each worked on a different part of our goal for our school in need of improvement. I'll share with you some of the things that we've done. So for ELA and literacy across the area, we focused on text-based questions because we were pulling in the new requirements from the Common Core. And all of that is based on nonfiction, text-based questions. And we created, as a group, challenge bags, and of course, I forgot to bring one with me as I was hurrying out of the house. But what it is, is very simple, thought-provoking questions, and at the end of a class, as kind of like your wrap-up, your formal assessment, pull a question out, and the kids can write a quick jot in their notebook or on an index card, as kind of like their assessment as they leave the room, like, what did you learn today in this class? And it can be done with any content area, from ELA, social studies, to something that they've done in our class. We also had a word of the week, which every single week, from about November until now, we're still including it. We have a group of teachers that get together with the students and they create a word of the week. Usually, it's some type of word that might be a more difficult vocabulary word on one of the tests that we just took. And they talk about it every single day and talk about how you can incorporate it into your knowledge and incorporate it into your working skills. And usually, there's some type of contest that goes along with it with a simple prize. We also challenge the teachers to increase their use of Venn diagrams, charts, and graphs, but not just creating them, but using them and deriving some information from them. And one of the most exciting things that happened was, we have parent volunteers who come to read with at-risk students. They come twice a week, and they meet with kids for about twenty minutes, and they read with them, and they do a simple assessment with them, and they take notes, and those notes are sent back to the teacher. And that's really something we would like to broaden next year. It started with one team this year, and they did an awesome job with it. And I know next year, there's a lot of teachers who want to continue. Our attendance, again, we really were trying to think outside the box. We have a lot of at-risk kids in our building. And we had thirty-six staff members who volunteered extra time during the day, during their planning, during their lunch, during their morning time, and in the afternoon. And they meet with thirty-six different students that also have trouble with attendance or maybe are struggling someplace else across the area, and they become like their buddy. And they meet with them, and they've worked with them, and we do have an improvement in attendance with a lot of these kids, just by making that adult contact, and just by somebody saying to you, like, "I'm really here, I miss you when you're not here, please come back tomorrow", and just helping them out with whatever they need. We were lucky to have Mr. Chupalio with us, and he created an attendance work group and a discipline work group. And we're updating our board-approved policies with your approval, I guess, that will start next year. And we're gonna flag the absences a little bit better and start to contact those parents and all that kinda thing. We also have a job core bulletin that we have set up in the guidance office, and the guidance counselors have really taken that under their hat, and they have kind of like jobs, like, here's some things that teachers need to be done, here's some great students who would like to do them. And again, it is still like a sense of community in our school. Students with disabilities was one of our school in need of improvement goals. And so, a lot of the special education teachers met and began working on creating staff development, and we'd really like to continue that next year, about how we can get some speakers in to talk about meeting the diverse needs of learners and incorporating the Common Core standards in with that, and expanding our leveled reading library, which we have in place right now, but, you know, we need to make it better with lower-grade reading material and also higher-grade reading material, because we also wanna challenge those achieving students. The AIS is really targeting specific groups, and we worked a lot with Terry, and his last name just escaped me. Terry Ward, thank you. And we really took what he said, over the summer, we met as an IST group. And both of the AIS teachers are on that team. And we really talked about how we can move the kids in and out of the AIS program so that we're targeting certain students and targeting the needs that they have, instead of just letting these kids stay in AIS for the entire year when they really only need to maybe work on context clues. So they bring them in for a short time, really focus their energies, and work with those kids so that they kind of test out of the program and take with them and continue to use the strategies that have been implemented. So the AIS teachers were actually able to work with a larger number of students this year than they have in the past. Again, we worked with the discipline committee, and we updated a lot of our procedures that are starting to be followed right now and will continue next year. And we also have a wonderful character education group that many of them attended, Scott Wright's professional development with the Habits of Mind. And we have incorporated a lot of those things. Almost every teacher is using some type of Habits of Mind program in their classroom, whether it's a poster, the way they talk to their students, the actions that they work with their kids and how the kids are talking to each other. And we've also implemented in our timeout room, instead of the kids just going and sitting there and feeling angry, they go and they think about, you know, why am I here, what am I gonna do better, what can I do to change the situation, and they have a little form that they fill out, and they share that with their teachers. And so, we're hoping in the future to do a lot of more professional development with our staff on our workdays. And Scott Wright has also volunteered to do Habits of the Mind. And right now, during lunch, he has little Habits of the Mind training situations that he does for like twenty minutes during the lunch periods, and move in and out of when they have time. Now, I'll turn it back to Mr. Shaw to wrap.
Thank you, Jenny. And of course, with my leadership now, a lot of more things are coming. That'd be, a lot of work has been done, but with the changes of interim principal, there hasn't been much long-term vision and long goal-setting, and that's what I hope to start up as very beginning of next year. Consistency in leadership is going to pay off, and will work in the long run. We're gonna be working more specifically on increased parental involvement, development of a strong data team. Of course, the APPR, Common Core, and SLOs are coming from the state down, and I'm sure you folks are not strangers to those letters. But something that I told the staff on Friday, I wanted to start it right now, is a little bit more focus on pride of our building. We have a beautiful, beautiful... bit more focus on pride of our building. We have a beautiful, beautiful facility that I'm sure most of the people in this room had, and in helping build and craft, and thank you for that. We need to care for it. We need to be proud of who we are and what we have, and, well, we're starting now, so. More to come, but thank you all for your time. We appreciate it, and thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and everybody. Appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
No? We good?
All right, great job. Thank you so much. Great job. I always look over there, because you usually have some. Okay. Thank you very much. Yep. Okay, Gillette Road Middle School, BPT. Stand up, ladies.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Barbara Poole, Principal at Gillette. I have with me Laura Connors, who's our BPT chair, and she is going to give you an overview of where we're at with our ELA, and Nikki Slater, who is one of my associate principals, she's going to give an overview on our math. But before they get started, what we tried to do when, in the fall, when Mr. Finkel came to us and said, "We have school improvement goals to come in," we were like, "Oh, no." You know, one more thing on our plate. We were a scrap school. Every year, it seemed like building goals were changing. As soon as we would try to get something, you know, involved in what, you know, handle on what we needed to do, things would change. And this new process with the school improvement caused us to come together as a team and as a building to say, "How are we going to address this, and how is it going to be worthwhile?" And as you know, in the fall, we presented you all the data that we had from the state assessments with our ELA and the math, and we came together and decided to come up on some goals. And with those goals, we then went, "Oh, my, how are we going to address those goals and come up with something that we need to do?" So it caused a whole process in the building, and what we decided to do was get rid of what used to be house meetings, and we decided we would try to bring the teams together in grade-level meetings at least once a month, where they could focus, they could collaborate, they could design the strategies that they thought that we needed to be able to address our goals, and work together as teams with the hope that we would have something to produce for you tonight. And this also has started some talk among the building to talk about the professional learning community. We're starting that process also. But I won't talk too much on that. I will let them tell you where we went from the goals. When you had no strategies, you'll now hear our strategies and our results.
For ELA, our goals were written based on Common Core, knowing that that was obviously going to be something that, starting 2011, within 2012, or 2012-2013, that we needed to take care of. It was something that we, as a staff, committed to across all content areas to support. Although it might just be ELA that's being tested by New York State, we all feel that, especially in informational text, we all have a significant role to play. So while some groups like LoT may have supported ELA and not taken any hard data towards the ELA goals, other areas were collecting hard data, even if we were, let's say, science teachers. We were collecting data on compare and contrast or things like that to support our ELA teachers. We came up as a building with some common rubrics, so that students became familiar with not only the goals, but also the way that those goals were going to be assessed. You'll notice that some of the rubrics have blanks. That allows for flexibility, whether it be from grade level to increase expectations as the children get older, or also per assignment. A certain reading might only allow for three supporting details if it's a short reading. Another reading that's longer might require five to six to get a higher score. So these are just some of the common rubrics that we have, and teachers also committed to sharing those rubrics and using them with the kids, so that the kids became very comfortable with how they would be graded and were able to predict themselves and self-assess, "Where am I going to fall on this rubric? How did I do?" And that way, the students and staff take ownership of these goals and the ways that they can achieve the highest possible scores. We sort of bulleted some of the strategies that are being used. For 6th grade, the first strategy that was used was the 6th grade teachers in their grade-level meetings came to consensus on what story would be used. It came from the ELA series. They came to consensus on what kind of diagram would be used. It was a T-chart to help students compare and contrast, and they collected data when they studied two characters from the reading at the beginning versus two separate characters at the end. And they found that about 25 percent of students increased on the rubric that was used across all grade levels, or all classrooms. Another strategy that is the second one shown was for LoT, although they did not collect data, because again, they're really in a support role for these ELA goals. They did a lot of writing tasks, whether it be in English or in their target language, that supported the main idea and supporting details, ideas that are in our building goals, excuse me, both 1 and 2. For strategy 3, there was also a big connection between 7th grade social studies and ELA working cross-content, where students would compare the committee correspondence and Facebook, and they incorporated that into a compare and contrast essay. So again, this was sort of a building-wide initiative and a recognition that we all have a role in supporting ELA goals.
Or I can shout. I can use my angry mother.
But they can hear you.
Okay. I'd just like to offer some anecdotal evidence in discussion with the teachers, some of the things that they noticed overall. In discussion with a science teacher, the response from this was that the teachers themselves have noticed a tremendous growth in the children's writing from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. Comparing the way they wrote their answers on their topical test to the last one they just took, that there were, that the writing was more focused, it was more, it was clear, it was more concise, and the details were much, you know, more prevalent. Also, in social studies and English, some of the comments I heard from that was the fact that there became a more common language between the two content areas, and that students themselves are starting to make connections between content areas, and saying, "Oh, wow, that we're talking about that in English, and so now I can apply this to social studies." And in general, the teachers really feel that the students' writing has really been as much better over this past year. So we have a building math goal, and with the building math goal, we really focused on word problems, and trying to help children read and understand a word problem so that they could decode it, create whatever mathematical equations or formulas they needed, and then to actually solve the problem. When we did these word problems, the word problems were written so that every single number was written out, so there were no actual numerals in the problems. Everything was in words, and the children really had to understand and be able to read those words, understand what the problem was, and then calculate the answer. So we also had a common rubric in math that focused on identifying and decoding the problem and organizing the problem. And every grade level did the same thing, 5, 6, 7, everybody did the same thing. So we do have some results from that, and you'll notice that in 5th, 6th, and 7th grade, all of the results increased over time. So there was a grade improvement in that. So you'll notice in 5th grade, a 37 percent increase in the students gaining the highest score over the first time it was administered, and 21 percent in 6th grade, and a 17 percent in 7th grade. So that is the hard data we have. So then, in conversations with the teachers, some of the things that we noticed is that the majority of the children did improve. One of the most common errors, and this was in all three grade levels, the students wrote the numbers incorrectly. They might read a 487, and they used an 87 for the calculations. Same thing happened in every grade level. When we asked them to write in words how to solve the problem and what the problem was, instead of doing that, they just wrote a mathematical expression rather than doing what was asked. We were asked them to write a detailed explanation of how they solved the problem, and most often, they might have given a fragment or not have actually written anything. And so many of the students did not get the correct calculation because they didn't interpret and decode the problem correctly. What the teachers did after they got that result is they all worked on some strategies to help the students understand the word problems. So every teacher actually reviewed the problems with the students. They taught them how to highlight the key words, cross out words that weren't important. They went over them sentence by sentence. The children worked in small groups. They used graphic organizers to identify the key points of the problem, and then they practiced similar problems before they had the next assessment. So, in summary?
I think overall that the staff feels very invested in these goals, which might be a little bit new to some extent. I think we all feel the pressures of having a lot of expectations from various places, whether it be the state or our own expectations, our own administration, the district administration. And it can be difficult because you feel like you're doing a lot, but not very well. And Dr. Dice constantly talks about going from good to great. There needs to be intense focus in order to do that. Otherwise, we're just doing everything okay. And so I think that the staff really felt that the after-school meetings were a beneficial time. As you well know, in the middle schools, there's not a lot of common time that teachers share. You've got 20 minutes in the morning, you've got 20 minutes until the end of the day, and with the size of schools that we have, there is no way that it can be scheduled that all 5th grade teachers are offline at the same time. So although there might have been initial, "We have to go to another after-school meeting," that quickly went away when they felt that this was beneficial, that brainstorming could happen. "What are you doing?" Not just on general assignments, but the same assignment, because they're all doing that one reading. They're all doing that same math problem. And that intense focus really allowed us to feel very invested in these goals, and we hope that there's an ability for all of the district to kind of recognize that the more narrow our focus, the more intense our effort can also be. And so that would be something that we would really like in order to increase staff buy-in.
Questions?
I just want to make a comment. When you came here in October, and you presented your goals to us, I was amazed that an entire middle school building, grades 5 through 7, was going to work and target on just one idea to work. I think that's fantastic. Your results have shown in your comments about teachers, science teachers, music teachers, phys ed teachers, all working for the same goal and fitting that goal into their classes. That's amazing. At a school that has, what, 1,600 students? That's great. That's awesome.
You know, that we're in right now, you know, especially with the ELA math, we had nice, hard data. You know, the ELA, it took us some time to come up with, we had the rubrics, or what strategy we're going to use, what, you know, and to bring them together, the, you know, the afternoon grade-level meetings have really helped. We haven't gotten as far as we really wanted to be. We'd hoped to have real hard data for you tonight, but it's more, you know, the anecdotal data, but we see the growth, we see the change, and it's something that we hope to carry on. Next year, with the same goals, we're not coming back to say, "All right, we have a new set of goals," but to be able to continue where we were at. That's our dream.
Barb, has there been any discussion with administration from Rocks, since you guys are sitting here too, to have some kind of overlap on at least one goal, so that when the kids get to whatever, when they leave your buildings, that they're on the same page?
Well, you know, it's interesting that you say that, because Mr. Shaw and I and Nikki today in a meeting talked about, not necessarily the goals, but how much we need to work together. And because of being schools in need of improvement, we're all struggling in quite, you know, pretty much the same areas, and some of the professional development we need is needed in both buildings. So the fact of coming together with these goals could be a good possibility, where that way, especially our children are going between buildings as they move, they'll all be working on the same thing, and hopefully, the teachers all working on the same.
Nikki can speak for all of us that it seems like the best practices in one place always carry over, you know, because if you've got one school that's doing something, I mean, around the table, we've said it many times, then why aren't we looking at, is there a way that we can adopt that in the other school? So it's good that you're working together, because everything in our district, at least right now, funnels into those, into the junior high school and the high schools, so.
And that's one of the things we want. We want consistency between the programs.
Yeah, I know how frustrating the 5th grade teachers feel when they have these kids from all different buildings, and, you know, they're all on different pages, and then we do the same thing when they go into 8th grade. So, you know, it would be helpful as a district if we were all kind of like.
Benefit everyone, and it's very child-centered.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Have a great night.
You too.
John, Lakeshore. My glasses are on my desk. I apologize. Thanks for letting us come. I'm John Colam, the building principal at Lakeshore, and joining us today, we have our BPT chair, who's also an AIS teacher, Julie Biondelillo. We also have a 3rd grade teacher, Lisa Vogler, who's joining us. She's one of our team members. And we have a few staff members out there and a few other BPT members. Howdy back there. We had a fun time updating this program. We had submitted about six weeks ago, and we were able to add some updated data. One of those areas was in our attendance goal. We have always tried shooting for 98 percent. We come close. We don't quite get there, but the kids have fun with us. We do theme days on the half-days, which sometimes impact our attendance. And the nurse works really closely with the school social worker and the classroom teachers, working with parents, trying to make sure if a trend starts to develop for a child, we're working on making sure that they can come back to school. We also have built up a circulation area in the library for our teachers, and we see that many staff use those books that are specially ordered by your librarian, and we're seeing quite a difference in the number of books borrowed for classroom use, sending good messages, helping kids make good choices. For the last 10 years, we've been looking at referrals and categorizing them, breaking them down into areas, and then comparing by the year. And it does seem like, at times, behaviors get more challenging. But across this year, working closely with our school social worker But across this year, working closely with our school social worker and the psychologist and the classroom teachers, working with behavior plans and the special education department, we've seen a marked reduction in suspensions. We did see a slight reduction cafeteria referrals, but we didn't have a large number to begin with. And our bus referrals did go up, but we're still in an area that we think, "Okay, this is going all right." Our class referrals, once again, I think that really impacts the strong character ed message as well as the behavior plans, that if we have a child that is looking at more than three referrals, we really need to see what's happening, and what can we do to help kind of cut them off at the pass and make good choices. And we're going to go into some of the academic areas now.
Hi. Our BPT team also doubles as our data team. And one of the things we did in the fall was we looked at the state tests, and we did a gap analysis with Donna Marie Norton. We looked at last year's state tests, and we went through and we looked at areas that we were strong and areas that we were weak, weaker, I should say. And one area that kind of showed us that we needed to work on a little bit with the kids, and maybe they needed a little extra, a little more support, was money. So we kind of looked at that area, and we baselineed, or we benchmarked our kids at the beginning of the school year. We took a look at them and we figured out, what do they know? And we assessed them again in January to find out how much they had grown. And we were pleased to see that they'd made considerable growth in January. Now, looking at kindergarten, you'll notice that we did not baseline kindergarten in September because it's not developmentally appropriate. They're just coming to school, and we really don't expect them to know anything when they come in to kindergarten. So kindergarten children were baselineed in January. We assessed them at the beginning of, we looked for their beginning knowledge in January. And now that we're at the end of the school year, teachers are assessing the children for the end of the year. So we're looking at where the kids have come and where they're going, if they're meeting our goals for the end. Another area that stood out in our gap analysis for us that we would like to improve were math facts. And again, we benchmarked to see where our kids are. And we've seen good growth in our winter assessment, and we're looking forward to even better growth in June. Our next, so throughout the building and throughout the school, we have different things that we do to support the children and encourage their growth. And this is one thing that we have outside the cafeteria that children do while they're waiting in line for their lunches, so take a look. Or. These are different little math facts, and depending on what level children are at, they can, whether it's an array or whether they should know the fact, any child in the building that's doing a multiplication question should be able to figure it out, depending on what level they're at. Those were our, those were some math goals that we had. Moving into the ELA realm, we focused on main idea and detail. And one of the reasons that we chose this area was because the New York State Common Core that we are, that has been moved, New York State has moved to the Common Core. And there's been a shift in the ELA, and the shift has been for teachers and students to move more towards nonfiction or informational text. And one of the goals is to move towards finding details in informational text and looking for the main idea. So the teachers and students have been focusing at Lake Shore on finding details and moving towards looking for main ideas and being able to pick details out of text. And you can see the benchmark and the growth that we've made. And again, we're looking towards June growth again. And we have our friend Sarah here, who is going to demonstrate some of the things that she's learned. Really need the volume on this one. Sarah. And now Julie's going to take over.
So in terms of literacy development, it was, it's important for all of us to take a look at a child and look at many data points of what a child can do and where we need to go. We have observation survey, we have level literacy, we have Fountas and Pennell. And this year, we were approved by Mr. Bowles to go ahead and benchmark, benchmark our whole building three times a year. We benchmark our building in the fall. There was a small team of us that went around to all of the buildings. We benchmarked them in the winter. And so the next few slides, we just wanted to share some of the results with you on our benchmarking results, our data. What we did for the next few slides was that the United States tests around 500,000 students with Ames Web. And so norms are set nationally, so our goal at Lake Shore, obviously, was to beat or to exceed the national norm. So the first piece that we have is the kindergarten early literacy skills. One huge piece to our building this year, and it was the first year, is we have the Elves program. And these are volunteer parents that come into our building beginning January, and they worked alongside our kindergarten teachers to work with those students who needed some extra help with the small letter naming and letter sound, et cetera, in our building. They come five days a week, and they work with children for about 15 to 20 minutes. They're using these results and some of the assessment pieces to help our children gain the growth and gain those skills and early literacy skills. So in the fall up above, you'll see that the only piece that was measured with kindergarten was the letter naming. And then in the winter, we've got letter naming, letter sound, phoneme segmentation, which is the children hearing sounds and nonsense words. And we did exceed the national goal, the target. Another piece of literacy is that we want children to be strategic readers. And along with being a strategic reader, it's important for them to build fluency, which is to become accurate readers. So we thought as a building that we wanted to take a look at our fluency goals. There is some data to update that children who read so many words per minute do well with the New York State test, and I don't have that information in front of me. So we thought that we would take a look at fluency and use fluency as another goal in our building. So, go ahead, that's okay. Data showing the second grade fluency. We will begin benchmarking the third time for the spring, beginning tomorrow. But again, we have exceeded the goals, the national norms, and third grade as well. There is some, a small amount of growth here with the fourth grade, but as the text gets more difficult, there are less picture cues, there are more higher-level thinking process, there are more comprehension pieces, it gets more difficult for children as they move along grade level with reading and decoding and fluency. But we're still exceeding the national norm.
Measures that we use, gauging our progress. We are heading into the next stage of really kind of testing the waters on how we did. As you can see, we have a large BPT team and a large data team. That team does double duty. And we're really lucky to have such a dedicated group of people. Do you have any questions for us? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Do you have any board committee reports? Comments?
I just wanted to let everybody know, a couple people approached me at church, and they were excited either their grandchild participated from Roxborough Road Middle School, I think it was the Siphonic Band, I could be wrong, won first place on Saturday at Darien Lake, and they were very pleased with that win.
A lot of people from North Syracuse up at Darien Lake this week.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the buses coming. I was watching the buses, Kay, on the thruway coming east Saturday.
Fifty-five miles an hour, right?
Yep. I have to say, I was coming up on the buses and I wasn't doing 55 miles an hour, so. And when I went by, we saw our buses.
They had to wait in the air.
No, they were, they were moving along pretty good, and that's, they weren't having any difficulty. Nobody was, it's not going to be an issue. There was a lot of other issues on the thruway, but I have to say that our buses were on their way back, and they were doing what they were supposed to be doing, so.
Dr. Dice, did you have anything?
I'd just like to.
Oh, hold on. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Andy to talk. Okay. I want to mention about the Special Olympics that were held Tuesday, Thursday, May 17th at the CNS Stadium. Kim Higginbotham, Tom Tatham, and their committee members need to be much appreciated, much appreciated, and the many volunteers also need a big thank you. What really surprised me were the very generous donations. Let me tell you what I noticed. Geico for the magic balls for each child and others. Each child got one, but the older people took it, too. Coca-Cola for the many colored t-shirts. Will you hold that up for me, please? We all got one of those, but they were all different colors according to what job you And the back says something, I have no clue what that means. Volunteer be, I don't know what that means. Right. Okay. And they also gave all the beverages for the hospitality room, thanks to Coca-Cola. The next one is the amazing donation of Stephen Hughes at Tim Horton's on Route 11, Taft Road in North Syracuse, for the donation of, he's, he's at Taft Road, Route 11 and Taft Road, that's where we go, over here. And there's also one on Buckley Road and 7th North Street. He gave all the coffees, all the tea, all the hot chocolate, and all the condiments, including the hot cups. He also had donut holes, I believe they were on the outside for other people to have. And in the hospitality room, there were donuts, cut bagels, believe it, we didn't have to worry about cutting them, and assorted cream cheeses, and then he also brought us muffins. I mean, this is, it's just amazing. And, let's see, I forgot one. Okay. Jannelli sausage. All the participants, all the little kids got shirts from him. He, I don't know what they look like, I don't have one to show you. And he donated all the sausage that was in the concession stand for people to buy. Just amazing what these people will do for you. It's just unbelievable. Anybody got anything else to say? Because I got the next one? Okay. I got the next one. Guess I know what I do, I make a piece of paper. It's about the, I'm going to have to go by what I think. Okay. The, they're calling it the CNS Hall of Fame. It's baseball. It was held on Saturday. And it really was amazing. The people that were there, all the people that were recognized were there except one. And he's out of town, and so was his mom, and that's just, he's an only son, so that's, there's only one. And I really felt bad that he didn't come back because we all remembered him. Go, give me his name, Bob.
It's Mrs. Nandan's son, Matt Nandan.
No, 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 they were there. Dale, Dana Disco. No, we felt really bad that he didn't come, but, I mean, there was nobody to take his trophy. But you could only imagine the plaque that they got. It was absolutely amazing with a picture on and all the, all the, all the awards and all the things that they did throughout their, their whole career of baseball, starting with high school. It, to me, it's just amazing. Okay, so what I want to really thank you, thank the people for, the Gates family gave the money for this trophy, there's trophy cases behind home, what do you call that, dugout for the baseball team. And there's a banner, because, you know, those, those awards went to the people, we don't have them. But they made a banner, and it's behind the bleacher stand with all the inductees pitchers and what they did and what they, what they were honored for. And this went back to 1929. Oh my, we are getting old here.
Wasn't a big banner. Wasn't a big banner?
It's a big banner, yeah. But they had one for each century, like, oh, yeah, that's what they're doing.
Inductee per century.
If anybody gets a chance to go over there, it really, really is amazing, and I thank the Gates family very much for putting up all that money, because it must have cost them a lot of money.
Can I quick, say a quick thing? CNS had their credit recovery.
Graduation.
Dr. Dice will speak to that, but it really was a nice little ceremony today, so, go ahead. Go ahead.
Everybody okay?
We're wonderful. Thank you very much. Let me say all that.
Okay, go ahead.
I won't repeat what Kay and Tony said, but what I will say is that it's just always exciting to just see our students who are doing amazing things and our staff who are also doing amazing things. And so it was awesome to spend the day with the students and a couple board members at the Special Olympics. It was awesome to participate in the celebration for credit recovery. We do amazing work, and this community should definitely be proud. And I know they are because on May 15th, we were able to pass our budget. And so I would be remiss in not thanking this community, and I mean everyone, our staff. It's funny, you know, everyone was like, "Congratulations, congratulations," and my automatic response was, "Congratulations to you," because this was a team effort. And so thank you to our families, our parents, our students, our business owners, our senior citizens, our staff, everyone, far and near, who, you know, did what they needed to do to get the word out about the great things that we are doing as a community, and the fact that we spoke loud and clear when we voted yes on May 15th to pass our budget. As well as the fact that we could not have done any of what we did without the hard work of people sitting around the table, the presentations that came out of the business services office. The presentations that came out of the business services office were excellent. The fact that they were clear, they were concise, they were easily understood by members of the community. The fact that our board meetings are publicized. I continue to hear the fact that, the fact that it was able, that people were able to watch the board meetings at their own convenience allowed more people to be informed about what was going on. The fact that we were able to connect with individuals who had questions, I think, put us in a amazing position to be able to pass this budget. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone who came out, made sure that they were a registered voter, and, and voted yes for our budget. Thank you again. Have a great evening.
And with that, we'll let our participation in government students go home and study. So, on up and we'll, it's got to be the last few that are starting large droves.
Come on over, kids.
We can all sign.
Anybody can sign.
How you doing?
Everybody on the table can sign.
Hi, dear Clark. How are you?
Hi, how are you? How you doing?
You go.
Good.
Finding right here, right?
Let me do it.
You grab your pen from you?
No, that's all, only until I'm around, that's all.
Thank you.
She's good. She still comes in to see me every now and again.
Ohio State. Beat Syracuse.
Thank you very much for coming here. Good luck, have a great night.
Congratulations, honey.
Was it too blind for you?
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Good for you.
Senior.
Hi, James.
Where do you work? Where do you work? I'm his best customer. He knows when I walk in just what to make me. Which subway?
Yeah.
Once a while I do go there. Oh, just- Brother, honey, thank you, honey. Have a great night. Yep. Take care.
The crowd's going to thin out a little bit.
You must be going to school, huh?
You're welcome. Crowd's going to-
Oh, yeah.
That's all right. Thin out a little bit.
Pretty sure she did. I think I know she did.
A lot of bit.
I think she did.
That's okay.
Well, you know, now that the budget-
Wow, you can see the crickets out there now.
They're going to go home and be ripped.
I got you. We're all by ourselves.
They're going to watch it on TV.
Except for Mrs. Flanagan sitting in the back there, we're all by ourselves here.
Okay. Um, routine action items. Are there any questions or discussions on items A, B, and C? Motion to take A, B, and C as a group. Sandy first, Michael second. Recommended action is to take them as a group. Do I have a second on that? Okay. Recommended action is to approve A, B, C as submitted. All in favor? Unanimous. Item D is the consideration of bid awards, contract awards. First, one is, well, let me, let me do this. Are there any questions or, or discussion on them? They're somewhat routine.
I wonder if they could give you the quantity discount?
Yeah, tell me about it.
The first bidder diamond has got-
Yeah. Are there, so there, there are no questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I, I just want to know what the total thing is. How much?
What's, what's the total?
The, it's, it's about three million. Came in, three million one, we came in at about $750,000, less than we thought we would come in. The bids were a may.
So, in other words, you can save that money?
Three million eight was what the proposition was, and this is about three million.
About three million two then.
With that money, you could save for something else. That's what I'm-
Right.
Okay.
Can it be saved for something else, or does it have to be specifically allotted for-
What will happen is, you know, they're ripping the roofs. Now, John, John Ward is here, he can comment when we get up, talk about Gillette Road, but we're ripping the roofs right down to the decking, so we may come across some things that-
Yeah, okay.
That warrant expansion of the project a little bit, but all, all around roofing.
Got some wiggle room.
But, yeah, John and Dave Kasuv did a great job getting those bids.
They've been walking those roofs for a long time. All right, then, if there are no questions or no comments or discussion, the recommended action in item D is to approve those contract awards as submitted. Dot, second, Tony, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Great. And, great job, John. Again, I just wanted to say, I was at the, the Smith Road ribbon cutting last Thursday, and the, the grounds looked absolutely impeccable. It makes-
Had to bring that up. I had to say something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Still got money held back from Smith Road thing? Smith Road project?
Little bit of money left on Smith Road.
Small amount going to cover the sound system in the gym? Thank you, dear.
But it looked great, John. So, your, your, your team has been, as many others in the district, you're asked to do more with less. And unfortunately for you, your, people see the buildings, they see the grass, they see the, the landscaping, and you, you guys are doing, guys and girls are doing a great job. Okay, budget vote results. Why don't we, why don't we go-
Well, as, as Dr. Dice already reported, we, we had a very successful budget process and our vote, our yes votes were about 62% of the votes on the, on the, the major budget, the main budget items. And I'm not sure what level of detail. Do you want to talk more in detail than that? I mean-
Pretty much two to one on the budget. The total votes were 4,676, which is probably 2,000 something more than, than I've ever had experience with in 19 years. So, to, to piggyback on what Dr. Dice said, we really have to thank the public. We ask them to get people out. We ask the kids to talk to the people that they know that are 18 and their neighbors, and they just rocked the vote. They really did. And, you know, it's, it's always disconcerting when, when we have a 120, 110, whatever the budget's been over the last four or five years, and there are 10,000 households in our school district and 1,000, 1,200, 1,800 people show up to, in support or not in support. And I was really, I have to thank everyone, everyone also for, for getting out. That's, that's very encouraging to see 4,700 people pretty much come out to vote, so. Are there any questions on that at all, or any?
Comment that I have is, it was amazing to me to see how many retirees were out talking to their friends and helping NSCA. And it just amazes me to see the retirees come back, how much they care about the district, that they, they don't, they, they really, they're gone.
Probably a third of our-
I mean, it's encouraging. The majority of the people are listening. It sounds, it seems that they listened and they're, you know, we gotta, I think the key to our success is to make our residents understand that it's important to support education. And if, no matter where you go, you got to support education. You know, some places higher or lower levels than other, but I'm, I'm really, I'm- Okay.
If I could just say one thing about, you know, related to, to, you know, the budget, not directly, but had an opportunity to go to the junior high talent show on Friday night. And I think, you know, kudos to John Nadler and Luke Morse and Mike and everybody that was involved in that. Anybody that's involved in this community that has an opportunity to see some of the extraordinary things our kids do, I was just blown away by that event. That was a, better than probably any high school in central New York could do, and that was our junior high.
Well, even the, the plays.
The plays, you know.
The plays, you know, the Strings Festival, the science fairs. I mean, yeah, it's so moving. And, you know, and when we sat here talking about, you know, cutting music, art, you know, and having participated in all of those things, and, like, to be so excited that we don't have to take those type of experiences away from our kids, it's just a great thing. It really is.
I'd just like to say a little comment, too. We, sometimes we barbs from the community that we're not seeing community members, not see individual board members at all of the events or a majority of the events. And sometimes we're there, we're just in the back of the auditorium, we might not be in the front, or we might be at a game or on a sideline, or, you know, we might be off doing something else with other kids doing, you know. So, I, I wouldn't, I would caution the, the audience not to necessarily jump to conclusions that individual board members don't go to anything just because we're not necessarily seen in the front, you know, or visibly seen. We, we, you know, every single one of us at one point or another have been at everything we can be at.
Lurking in a dark corner somewhere.
Right. Well, I would also add that for staff.
Absolutely. You know, absolutely. That, that judgment of us is, is a little harsh at times to hear when, you know, you know that, you know, you're going to things, maybe not.
When my kids were in middle school, they were mortified. They'd say, they'd say, "You're coming to," they're, they're not going to call you in a douche or anything like that, are they? Don't worry about it. So, I mean, we have board members that go to everything. And, and, and I've always said it in the past, that, that those board members are, I'm so grateful to the board members that go to everything-
Absolutely.
Because some of us can't. And to have those people to commit, on top of all the other things that they do-
They represent us well.
And everything else, the time to go to everything. I mean, not just every concert, not just every game, but every banquet.
Everything.
And, and every, everything, and I just-
We got one coming up.
Yep, and we appreciate that. We really do.
We do, absolutely. But, you know, that, that's my point, is that it's, it's a balanced kind of thing, you know, that, that people shouldn't jump to conclusions that some of us don't go to anything. I, I think that's a state-
I'd like to add that Gianna has enjoyed herself at all of the events that we have attended.
I can tell.
She's a world traveler by now, right?
She's a world traveler.
Okay. Item B is the Gillette Road Middle School parking issues.
And so, let me chime in for a moment. So, we've got John and we've got Donna who are going to come up. We've had conversations about the parking situation, and we wanted to present the information to you so that we can have your input about how we need to resolve this issue. But in a nutshell, for all of the things that we currently do, which are phenomenal, we, we should all agree that we do not, and I, let me say that again, do not have sufficient parking. Okay?
A lot of places we don't, yes.
Correct. And so, speaking specifically of Gillette, turn it over to you, John.
Okay. Good evening. Just like to run through the history a little bit here, so everybody's aware. This parking lot down here, when the complex was originally built and when we first started using it, was predominantly referees and buses. Then over the years, in '04, we added this upper parking lot here. We had 70 original parking spots that we were able to get down once we made it a complete parking lot and took the buses out.
Seventy, I said.
Seventy. Yes. And then when we added this upper parking lot, that was another 50 regular parking spots and two handicap parking spaces. Then over here, you have eight handicap parking spaces. Then, of course, I think the idea was always that the building itself, that parking lot, would be used for, for visitors and those kind of things. So, the area that's in question is, is right up along the road here on both sides between the two parking lots. So, what we've done over the years to try to stop people from parking on, on the, the green space in those areas, we put just metal snow stakes in, had plastic snow fence there. Stakes get pulled out, the fence would get untied and put down. And, and it's been an ongoing concern. So, it was brought up again about a week ago, week and a half ago. And my suggestion to the superintendent and Don was, you know, maybe we just fence both sides of that road and leave it at that. Then as Don and I got talking more, we talked about, well, maybe we'll turn where they're parking into some additional parking spots. One of the concerns with that was between this ball field along this line here, this all slopes towards the wetlands down here, all right? That's the drainage for all the fields, any runoff off, off the ground. It all either comes down through here or there's a little swale right in here. And this is relatively steep down and through here. And then here, you're very close to the dugouts and also the bleachers. So, you know, we thought, okay, maybe we should leave a little buffer area there for people. We do have an opportunity, though, right up along in here, that we could add some additional parking. It would be perpendicular parking to the road. We'd be 18 feet in and nine feet wide for each parking spot. We could add 13 additional parking spots there. And pretty much what we would do there is we take it down about eight inches, remove the topsoil, put fabric down, run a crush on top, roll it, stripe it, and, and leave it at that. And then this side, I would suggest, and, and this is more or less option two, this side would still be fenced. And then up in here, you know, we could leave it or we could fence it. So, so we have really three options. Option one would be to fence the entire road and not make any more additional parking, and also fence all up along here and along here. And that's approximately $10,000 to do that. Option two would be to fence up the road to the outfield fence right here on the west side, and then add 13 additional parking spots here. That works out to about $3,200. And option three would be to do what I just mentioned in option two, but also install fencing along this area. And that would be approximately $6,500.
But that's just to do that. We're not taking into account also what the maintenance would be, given that we're now putting up these fences and so forth.
Right. Maintenance-wise, I mean, we have snow stakes probably every four feet right now, so we, we still have to weed whack around those. The fence, if we installed that, the posts are eight feet on center. So, it, it reduces some of it, and we can also get the decks underneath the railing itself, but we still do have to weed whack along that, around the post.
As, as well as the fact that even if we were to fence, put additional parking, it does not mean that we would still have sufficient parking.
Correct.
So, we could potentially be just pushing people to go find another illegal place to park.
And, and I think the intent originally, when I spoke with Don, was the fencing at least eliminates the issue in here. And the, the safety concern with people walking through here and cars trying to get in and out. You know, the hope was that that would force them up to the building lot itself. Do they end up on Thompson? Do they end up on Gillette? Probably. Or across the street.
Right.
Not the kids, it's the parents.
So, now, if, if we, let's, let's explore the $6,500 option you're talking about one more. If we, if we look at your road there, then I, I think I agree with the fact that, that having cars near the dugouts and whatnot is kind of, it's kind of dangerous. So, so you're saying that if we put a fence along that road, all the way down to the parking lot, is that what you're saying?
Well, it would start right here, it would tie into existing fence there-
Right.
It would come up, we'd stop it right at the walk-
Mm-hmm.
Start it again on the other side.
I got you.
And then this fence here is right on the corner of the road. So, we just tie it right into that fence.
And there's a fence that goes all the way down the other side?
And then that runs up here. This is gated here.
Okay.
And then there's a little bit of fencing here.
And so, you would go across there, so they couldn't park on the grass on this end of the soccer field, then?
Yes.
And then you would put additional spots down to that tree line, right?
Not over here.
Not over there, no, on the other side.
Right here.
Down to that tree line.
Right, right here, perpendicular to the road.
And then there'll be a piece of fence down the other end to tie in, so they can't park in that other little green area.
Right. We'd start the fence right about here. This is the main drainage pipe for the fields and everything, south of this area. So, we'd probably start it right about here, come up along here, back here, and then stop right there. What's there now? So, it's post and just a single rail, you know, 30 inches high, I think it is, roughly.
Okay.
And they just can't put their car there.
Right. Similar to what we did along the building, coming out onto Gillette by the bus loop, we, we moved that fence down and installed some more of the wooden fencing to, to stop them from parking there.
So, ideally, then, to, to piggyback on a Dr. Dice's point, they'd have to park on Gillette Road. They, there's nowhere they can illegally park in that area at that point.
Similar to what we did along the building, coming out onto Gillette by the bus loop, we, we moved that fence down and installed some more of the wooden fencing to, to stop them from parking there.
So ideally, then, to, to piggyback on Dr. Dice's point, they'd have to park on Gillette Road. They, there's nowhere they can illegally park in that area at that point. They'd have to park on one of the streets...
We'll see.
Or go up to the parking lot.
And Gillette really is, there's not a lot of shoulder there, there's a pretty steep ditch. I think a lot of them park in the businesses across the street.
Yes, they do.
Now, what about, I know you received an email about using the basketball courts.
Oh, God.
The basketball courts, we only open up for large events, and we have guards on site because we have to maintain a fire lane around the building. And, and without somebody there, lose that very quickly.
Right. Right, right. It creates a few more, but we're kinda locked.
Anything, any other...
I mean, it's not gonna solve all the problems, definitely, but, but, I mean, I have to agree, looking at this diagram, that, you know, you don't want cars parking down there near where the dugouts are, and, you know, where people are crossing back and forth. They don't care. They don't care.
Talking baseball?
Baseball.
They do.
Yeah.
Well, as a softball stuff, I, we, we still, the ones who know parking issue, we always park at school. Walk down, it's the same thing.
It's not them.
It is, it is the same thing.
You haven't gotta worry about a ball either, they can't get that far.
Yeah, I met with Scott Freeman from Keppel and Gir Freeman this morning, and we just, I had some concerns if we added, if we started to add, even with runner crush, because of that being a wetland there, if we were gonna get into any issues, but it's not enough that's gonna get... The one concern I have is, you know, with runner crush, I think we'll be all right, but everything drains to there, so there certainly is a potential that, that runner crush may end up holding water for a while. We'll, we'll make it bigger than what we need, so it holds its shape, but it still may become a collection for, for runoff.
They can park in the mud if they want.
That's what they do.
They park on the grass, they destroy the grass now. Okay.
It seems like a lot of money to make somebody understand to park on the grass, but it has to be, it has to be. My question is, is, are you going out for bid for this, or you're doing it yourself? How are we doing this?
No, this'll be done with my staff. The only thing we'll contract out is the actual doing the holes for the post if we, we go that route. Easier to have somebody come in than us renting the equipment and, and doing it.
The other thing I'd add is that John and I looked at the grounds, walked the grounds this morning, and the crew has caught up down there, and, and all the weed whacking is done, the lawns are mowed. You know, the grass is growing pretty fast now, and we fell a little bit behind there for a week or so, but it, it's, it's looking a lot better now.
Because I, I know, I, you know, the, the... But it, it was pretty wet this past week.
It's been a part of it, a lot of it, the grass is growing so fast the, the last month that it's, it's been tough for us to, to keep up with things.
Have the $6,500, $6,400?
Well, right, really? So we, we've talked about the fact that we figure out where we get the $6,500. And we really just wanted to bring it to the board, to have the board, you know, vote and make a decision on what we can do to hopefully address that. But I, I do wanna say, regardless, you know, if we put it in, it's only 13 additional spots. And when people wanna find a spot close, you know they may end up making one, even if it's not in the best place. But once again, given the signage, it will be at their own risk.
This'll be a little bit more permanent anyway.
Right, right.
They're not gonna be digging these, pulling these posts up or any of that stuff.
Right, right. So it at least looks aesthetically, you know...
And it'll aesthetically match anything else.
Matched, right.
Kay, did you have another question?
You mentioned the waiting, so I'm gonna start. You know, if the, I, I don't know if the softball tournaments are gonna be there, but let me tell you, there won't be a weed around, should that happen. This bothers me. There should not be a weed around during, when my kids are playing. I'm talking about all the kids, our kids. But if a tournament comes on, let me tell you, there's not a weed anyplace. I just feel that that's not right, that it should be done in the beginning, like, what is it, March, April, whatever they do, start. The bushes over there at the... Yes, the grass got old, thank you for doing that. Bushes still had the weeds in them. A lot of people there from out of town, and I don't know what to tell you. I, I just know that if, if this, if we have softball tournament there, I guarantee you there will be no, not a weed around. I, I don't understand why it can't be done for us, for my kids.
Sometimes that just is coincidence. I mean, our, our goal is to maintain it that way all the time. Unfortunately, we've lost many, many staff over several years, and it's a, a struggle for us to keep up.
We've had a long time to do that, and John, there's, you know that fence up here by the soccer that I get so crazy when it's unlocked? Park and fit through it, you know where I'm talking?
Mm-hmm.
Wrong there. You know that little hooky that goes up and down to hold to the post? You can't budget, I can't budget.
I believe there's a chain they use with that.
I know there's a chain, how come that little hooky thing doesn't work?
It really is just there to hold the fence wherever it is open to.
All right, so in other words...
It isn't anything for locking.
That's not gonna be an issue anymore that I have to worry about, right?
Shouldn't be, but I can't guarantee that.
Everybody's got a key, as I hear, everybody's got a key.
Yep.
Change the lock, and nobody has a key. No car can get in there, and what a job it could do if somebody's angry.
So, can we? Yeah, I'll make a motion that we do the $6,400 one there, whatever that option is, with the 13 spaces in the fence. Second that motion? Favor?
John, you know that, those two things that over there? First parking lot, are they, are they storage areas?
Yes.
They're using them.
Yes, those are for our equipment, those are full.
No way they could go on the grass.
They're gonna park where they wanna park, but they're not gonna be yanking them.
It gets too soft there. If I put them anywhere else, it's...
And what do, what do you think about striping again, re-striping?
We will, this summer.
Make it, so they know the driveway is the driveway and not to park on the driveway?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you, great, great solutions to that.
Oh, yeah.
It's not a, it's not a permanent fix, but it'll, it'll...
Take a little pressure off.
It'll take a little pressure off, definitely.
Yeah, it was a beautiful morning, that's right, I met John up there first thing.
Okay. I, discussion action item A, approving BOSI's 212, 213 co-sir of service contracts. Are there any questions on those? It's a somewhat routine item that we do every year. Don, did you...
It is a routine item, I just wanna clarify, in there, we have our food service director. We don't have anything in there for IT, because we're still evaluating that situation, and we don't have anything additionally in there for safety, because we're still evaluating the Larry Butler thing. I just wanted to let you know that, you know, that that's everything else that we required as part of our budgeting process.
Want to comment? I've been on this school board since 1982, I've never seen this before. I want to thank you and commend you for this. I, I have never seen this before. Thank you.
Okay, recommended action is to approve BOSI's service contract for 212, 213. Kay first, Bob second, all in favor? Also. Acknowledgements of gifts, item B, the following gift donations were made for two C High School students to attend the National History Day program in Washington DC on 10th and through June 12th, 2012. The CNS Optimist Club, $200, the North Syracuse Foundation, $310, and the CNS National Honor Society, $500. And we, all of the things that we do without the generous support of... At large, so we... Recommended action is to accept with gratitude the gifts of $200, $310, and $500. Dot, second, Michael, all in favor? That's unanimous also. We have personnel items A and B. Do we need an executive session before we take those? A motion to take A and B as a group. Michael, second path. Recommended action is to approve A and acknowledge B as submitted. That's unanimous also. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with four district bargaining units, and to review the employment record of four individuals with action to follow on two personnel matters. Second, Tony, all in favor? Unanimous, and we're adjourned.